Okay, all right, folks. We've got the light on and it is time to roll. So I'll call the meeting to order. And would you like to join us in the Pledge Allegiance to the Flag?
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Mary, roll call.
Bolson.
Here.
Collins.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Kellum.
Here.
Kupczynski.
Here.
Colburn.
Anne Johnson and Colburn are excused. Thank you, Mary. First on the agenda is a proclamation. And this is for Earth Day, for April 22nd, 2016. Whereas the global community now faces extraordinary challenges such as global health issues, food and water shortages, and economic struggles. And whereas all people, regardless of race, gender, income, or geography, have a moral right to a healthy, sustainable environment with economic growth. And whereas it is understood that the citizens of the global community must step forward and take action to create a green economy to combat the unper mentioned global challenges. And whereas a green economy can be achieved on the individual level through educational efforts, public policy, and consumer activism campaigns. And whereas it is necessary to broaden and diversify this global movement to achieve maximum success. And whereas Earth Day is the beginning of a new year for environmental stewardship commitments and to implement sustainability efforts. And whereas let it be known that Albany, Oregon encourages its residents, businesses, and institutions to use Earth Day to celebrate the earth and commit to building a sustainable and green economy. Now therefore, I Sharon Canopamayor of the City of Albany hereby proclaim April 22nd, 2016 to be Earth Day in Albany, Oregon. And I encourage all residents to support green economy initiatives and to encourage others to undertake similar actions. And witness whereof, I hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Albany to be affixed this 13th day of April 2016. And with that for Earth Day is a big event that will be coming up in downtown. Actually, it'll just be right out of City Hall here. And that is on a week from Saturday for April 23rd is procession of species parade. And the event, and it coincides with the farmer's market. And also, we will be recognizing our Tree City USA Arbor Day that day. And I'll be reading a proclamation at that event. So I do hope that everybody can be able to turn out. It's a fun event to be able to see all the kids and families dressed up in their unique masks and costumes. So I welcome everyone to attend. So, all right. That's with that for proclamation. Next for scheduled business, I think there, before we start communication, I just think there was a quick item that Commissioner Will Tucker wanted to come forward with.
Is he here?
I don't see him, though.
If you don't find him.
Oh, we gotta have it up at the podium.
If you later on when the chief is here.
If he's here. Okay, all right.
Yeah. Commissioner Tucker, he may not, my guess is he may not be here tonight. If he's not here.
Or maybe Stacy knows. You know if Chief Bradner's coming? Okay.
All right. Well.
Oh, come to the podium.
We're not as strict with our rules. We tend to allow people to wander aimlessly through our area and drink their coffee.
Yeah.
So, Madam Mayor and City Councilman, I've come to talk to you about the chief. And I am concerned about the chief and wanted to bring it to your attention. We've had a number of fire calls at the county, ambulance calls, people falling. We've had chest pains. And I think the chief should be noted that he has been monitoring the radios. And he's jogged across the street, not once, not twice, but a handful of times, if not more, been that first responder. He watches those radios, watches the calls, and he monitors them enough to know. And when he comes in, and if I'm the person who's asked for someone to be called because the person's laying on the floor of my wet granite, and they're laying there and they think they've broken a hip or whatever, he's come because he's monitored the radios well enough to know, and to know the station calls well enough, that he has noted that his downtown station is in active service someplace else. And he's having to piece together ambulances from North Albany or Station 13 out by Home Depot out there. And I don't know what to say about that. I have a son-in-law who's a fire officer, who also doesn't forget he's a paramedic. And they can't leave accidents at the side of the road. You're on vacation. And we have to stop at every car accident. Something should be said to the young man. And Shane Wooten, too, by the way, he's also come across a few times. On a serious side, I greatly appreciate it. The last time we had both of them in our building, there talking to an elderly person who had fallen. And both of them were there taking vitals, talking and getting their names started, birth dates started, starting that transaction to make, and making sure that there are enough bodies to carry, because we don't make it very easy for your crews. They have a difficult time servicing my building with those beautiful granite, or terrazzo, I should say, front steps that are a little bit slippery. And they have a challenge servicing my building. So I just wanted to bring it to your attention that those two, I so greatly appreciate that they still see themselves as first responders that take the time to monitor the radios. I mean, they're not there every time. They're only there when they know that their standard of service would be affected. And they want to make sure that the citizens of your great community and my great county are being serviced well. So I just was hoping to thank him, because I've told him, "Thank you." And he shrugs it off and acts like it's no big deal. But to me, I'm not sure how many communities you'd see the fire chief leave a meeting and drag people from his staff with him to jog across the street with their handheld radios to take on first aid for an elderly person who slipped on a stair railing or stairs in a courthouse. I'm not sure you'd see that in Los Angeles. I'm not sure you'd see it every place. Yep, there'd be people there, but I'm not sure you'd see the chief themselves, as he's the most common of my attendance from your fine building here that could jog across the street. So I wanted to make sure the mayor knew and the city councilmen know that I greatly appreciate the investment those two have made committing to this community and putting our safety first. So thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner.
And I'm sorry he's not here to arrest.
Yeah. No, we're just, and it's great to be able to hear that, you know, commending the chief. And he is very humble. And I think probably if he was here right now, he'd be just a shade of red. But, no, I'm just, that's very nice of you.
It's part of why I want to do it, because he's become, as you know, we do 9/11 ceremonies. And your staff has played a coordination role with the other fire departments to make sure, because when we start dragging equipment from Sweet Home Lebanon all this way, all those people all have to do some standby things to be ready in case there really was a major emergency during those days. And your staff always plays a role in coordinating that. And we, again, greatly appreciate the fact that they're outside that, just that box that says, "Not my job, not my, I'm not this." But I appreciate his being forever a paramedic.
Wonderful. Yeah, it's just wonderful. Yeah, we've got a top-notch staff, so we're proud of them.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you so much, Commissioner Tucker. Yeah. Okay. So first then is, and thank you for allowing me to kind of interject with Commissioner Tucker, Javier. So with that, we have communication. And Javier, did you want to come forward and present your report? And actually, it was a very wonderful report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Commissioners, Councilmen, women as well. Just wanted to say that you have attached the report, the annual report that we do. Forgive me, I'm using my phone as my draft. I didn't bring my printed copy. I just got off a plane from Chicago from a conference, so I'm rushing here to present it.
Would you like mine?
No, that's fine. I have it right on my phone.
Okay.
No, but I just wanted to make sure that you all had, and if you had any questions about the report, the HRC, the Human Relations Commission, has done a lot of work in terms of meeting community members. Want to commend City Manager Hare for his work in helping many members of the community who seem to be challenged with trying to find solutions to complicated problems. I think our commission has become very open to receiving some of the issues that sometimes don't get to the attention of the city council. So I'm really happy that we're able to be as thorough as we are and as functional as we are to present some of the issues that actually happen, they go unsaid, and some of the really good work that a lot of our Commissioners on the council do. You'll note that we've been involved with a number of city projects, or festivals, or events, trying to make ourselves visible to make sure that the City of Albany looks well and is responsive to the community's needs with regards to creating a harmonious city and place. Some of the things that I'll highlight for you, just to let you know, we've had some turnover over the last year continuously. This is what happens with our particular councils and commissions throughout the city. And this year's no different. We've had two or three new Commissioners that have come on. Kingsbury and Tafen have joined us. Denise Tafen and Graham Kingsbury have joined us. There's a new, I serve now as the Chair. Kim Whitley has done yeoman's work in being the Chair prior to this. And I want to publicly acknowledge her efforts for bringing us to the point where we're at. We have, over the last three years, done some really nice work and ceremonial work around Martin Luther King's Jr.'s birthday and recognizing his contributions to human rights and dignity. And we do an event every January. And Marilyn does a great job of helping us organize that particular day here. And thank you for that, Marilyn. We've had some issues that have been kind of concerning for us in terms of just access more than anything else for those community members that are English challenged in terms of speaking English. They do have folks that come and help them translate when they come and do reports. We've had issues around identification, trying to keep folks trying to get IDs for themselves. We've had folks concerned about housing practices, fair housing practices, folks that have been impacted. It just seems to be a concern when we have folks that English is not their first language, but they know enough to, or somebody in the community enough to come and speak to us and so we can actually try to get some kind of resolution. We've had some unfortunate incidents, that we've had really great community support from our police department with regards to graffiti that was kind of charged. And that's been responded to, and you'll see some of that as well. Overall, I think we've been a pretty responsive community. We're really excited about the Sunrise Project coming up in this summer. Hopefully, it will be finalized or soon thereafter. A lot of folks in the community are looking forward to that park being available as well. So, you know, the Latino Festival happening in September, it's always, it's been an annual thing, and then just being part of the community. So more or less, you have it in front of you. If you have any questions, please feel free.
Okay. Any questions? And there's, and we still have one vacancy then, on the commission then. And that's Councilor Kellum's.
Yep.
And I think you know about that.
I do.
Okay.
I am reminded of it two days before every meeting.
Oh.
Rich, do you have any, you know, because I have two.
Uh-huh.
I'm working on it.
Okay. Let us know if you need any suggestions at all. So, okay.
Very good.
Any other questions? Okay. Well, great job. We really appreciate the Human Relations Commission. So, and mostly being kind of that outreach is kind of one of our commissions that are really out there in the community. So we really appreciate that.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Javier. Okay. Next would be on page 14. And this is going to be a public hearing. So I will open the public hearing at 7:29 PM and ask Mr. Houghton to come up and do a staff report.
Do I need to do this? Just hit the bar, like the spacebar.
That's it?
Yeah.
So I don't get the password?
Hit Enter. Hit Enter.
Password that I need in?
Password there.
It says locked.
I can put my own password in, but that's not going to do us any good. It just went to sleep. Yeah.
Everyone said no password, but it shows there a password.
Do I need the mic? Use this instead? Got it?
Yeah.
All right.
Okay.
And is it? There we go.
All right. Very good. Thank you. So briefly, the council is aware of our proposed action on this item. At a work session in March, I visited with the city council about our proposed sale of two lots. And those lots are represented as a red rectangle box, at least a portion of those. And then that's just north of the larger piece of property that these are a part of. And the larger piece of property is represented on that drawing by the hash marked, the hash lines. So that's the general area that we're talking about. And I'm going to scroll down. There we go. So more specifically, we have two lots that are going to be created for this sale. The smaller of the two lots is about 6,500, 6,600 square feet. And we're proposing to sell the lot to Merlin and Cecilia Swanson, who own an existing home directly north and adjacent to that smaller lot. The larger lot is 18,858 square feet. And we're proposing to sell that lot to the, one of the adjacent properties to the north owned by Jamison and Christie Smith. And so that's the information that we shared with you at the work session. We have appropriately noticed this public hearing that we're about to conduct. It was advertised last Friday in the newspaper per ORS requirements. We have yet to receive any testimony or any comment. And so that's where we are going into the public hearing. If you still, after closing the public hearing, decide that you wish to move forward with the sale of property, then we'll draw up the necessary agreements and you'll be authorizing by resolution on page 17, the City Manager, to essentially consummate the deal. And I'm ready for questions.
Questions? Okay, all right. And we did have this at a work session, too. So, okay, thank you, Ed. Is there anyone here that would like to comment on this item? The public hearing is open. Okay, not seeing anyone. So with that, at 7:32 PM, I'll close the public hearing. And council, there is a resolution on page 15.
It's page 17, isn't it? Or maybe not?
15.
Okay, all right.
Adoption of the resolution, page 15.
Sorry, 60.
What is it? Mine says 15.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
It is.
All right. There's been a motion?
I was going to say second.
Was there a second?
He beat me to it.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay.
Mayor? Just to note that this is what we've just done, is sell off a piece of land that was a portion of a donation from Larry Epping. And I just looked it up. Larry passed away October 22nd of 2015. So he had a large holding in the Central Valley, has done a lot of good things for the public and for nonprofits. And his behavior and character of being a gentleman, and Larry is one of those guys, when you shook his hand, it was a deal. And he never backed away from one that I knew of. And we've had several discussions with him. And we acquired this property as a gift, and we owe him a debt of gratitude.
Yeah. He has, he has supported a lot of nonprofits, too. Donated a lot of money over his lifetime, so.
He basically donated the funds to build the Catholic school in Salem.
And yet, yeah.
He started out very, very humble, much like TJ Starker, only in a different business. Built wealth, but he shared that wealth.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, he sure did. So, wow, that's too bad. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Yep, all right. Thank you, Ed. So next is business from the public. Anyone here this evening? Okay. Not seeing anyone. And then next would be second reading of the ordinance.
This is an ordinance in many chapter 12.1.10, intent and purpose, and amending chapter 12.1.40 definitions and creating chapter 12.30, stormwater utility of the Albany Municipal Code.
Okay.
Question?
Uh-huh.
Has anybody jumped up and screamed and yelled and said, "Oh, no"? Or has this been quiet?
To the best of my knowledge, it's been pretty quiet. There have, I think, as most people are aware, Hassel's blog has talked a lot about the quote "rain tax." There's been commentary about that on the blog.
Relaxing.
No, I think.
That's all I needed.
Yeah, well, I mean, I think what people are concerned about, obviously, is what's it going to cost us? And at this point, since that question is still open and not being decided tonight, there hasn't been a lot of interest.
I did have, I've only received one email when somebody that was concerned. And they said that their, you know, property does not drain to the city street. You know, they kind of, with their gutters, you know, they, you know, collect their own water off their roofs. But, so they were opposed to it. And I says, "Well, right now, a lot of it, to be able to keep up with our storm drainage system, is coming off of other funds." You know, like with our sewer fund or our street fund. But I says, "But they do benefit by having a stormwater system, because they're going to the shopping, they're going to employment, they're driving the city streets, and you have to have that network of a stormwater system in order for our, you know, city to not have standing water everywhere." So everybody benefits, whether you are draining personally to a street or not. Everyone benefits because you're driving on all the streets that has that stormwater system. So she, you know, responded back and said, "Thank you. Didn't really think about it that way." They were looking at their own lot themselves, but on that. But that was it that I've had for anybody with a concern on it, so.
I'd move adoption of the ordinance on page 19.
Second.
Okay. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. Motion carried. All right. Next would be an adoption of a resolution. This is on page 25, but I'd like to let you know, it has an incorrect date. It says April 2013, but Mary told me that the, what's in the folder for me to sign is the correct date of 2016.
I'd move adoption of the resolution on page 25 and just comment that things like this often go unnoticed by the general community. But what this is, is modification of our enterprise zone that is being responsive to one of our local industries. Viper Northwest put them in enterprise zone. They're investing $2.9 million and looking at 23 employees. And for the benefits of the enterprise zone, they're going to receive some tax relief, but they're going to be paying 150% of the Lynn County average, and that's, if I remember right, a little over $57,000 per job minimum.
And if I could just piggyback on.
We did have a motion. Can we get a second?
Second.
Okay, second, okay. Go ahead, Wes.
If I could piggyback on Senator Collins' comments, we routinely approve, in fact, I don't believe we've ever not approved, an enterprise zone application that's been submitted to us, at least in the time that I've been here. And, you know, there is a, it's a good program. It is an incentive for folks to invest in their businesses, to add jobs. And I think it's been pretty successful over the years. We do sometimes forget that it is an important thing that I, that we do on behalf of the public and a fairly significant amount of revenue that is given up by, not just the city, but by the counties and the school district, to help these businesses expand. And as I said, while I think it's a really good thing, I think it's also good to be conscious that it does come at a cost.
And I'd add on to that, that it's not like we don't get the return on investment. Because while we don't tax the initial investment that the company's making, when they're putting 23 jobs into the community, $57,000 a job, that money rolls. And we do receive benefits from those people living here and shopping here and all members of our community. And in some cases, it's every bit as hard, if not harder, to retain a business than it is to attract a new one.
Do we have any idea how much money we do put into that?
I'm sorry? We don't.
I'm asking the manager how much money we do sacrifice by having a.
Well, how much money is foregone, has been foregone over a given period of time? I can't tell you.
I'm thinking per year.
Yeah. It's a, it would be hard for me to say, Councilor Olson, we've done it, like I said, the program's been around for a long time, and a lot of businesses have taken advantage of it. We also participate with other jurisdictions so that we're part of the zone where we may not be foregoing anything. For example, if the investment is taking place in Millersburg or Lebanon or something like that. But if it's taking place in Albany, you know, it just depends on the size of the investment and what the ultimate assessed value of that improvement is, which oftentimes, we don't know. So.
Dick, I just ran a quick number while you were answering that question. If the full $2.9 million investment was taxable, and part of its equipment and part of its improvements, then would be around $20,000 a year.
For that particular industry.
For that particular industry.
But we have, we give that benefit to a lot of different industries here in town. I have no idea how many.
It's not, I mean, we could certainly look that up. It's not a huge number. I mean, but it's.
Well, I'm all in favor of it. I'm just curious if there was a number that we could. Sometimes people ask questions to that effect, and it's nice to be able to answer.
Having been involved with various economic groups with AMDEC, it's one of the few tools we really have to help attract and retain investment in our communities. Our tax structure in this state is not exactly favorable for a lot of expansion. I think it's important that we use the tools that we do have, and enterprise zone is certainly one of them to encourage, to keep the investment here.
We do have our CARE program, also.
Yeah. And we have helped some industries with that.
That particular one, too.
Yeah. We helped Viper originally.
All right. There's a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. Next is modifying downtown parking regulations. And I don't see Ron Irish on this, but Stacy was here if there's questions. And we also have Peggy Burris with the Downtown Association if you have any questions. If not, there's a resolution on page 31.
Move for adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. All right. Thank you, Peggy. Next is adoption of the consent calendar. And if there isn't any items that need to be pulled off this evening, I'll entertain a motion.
Move for adoption of consent calendar.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. All right. Next is the demolition of Fire Station 11. And this is on page 51. And did you want Stacy to come forward? Questions of her?
Yes, Stacy, can you?
Thank you.
So the question I have, Stacy, is on page 52, we show a demolition and abatement project budget of $565,000. And we are looking to award a bid for $201,000. But there's been additional demolition work. Did the additional work also come out of the $565,000?
Yes. And that's how I tried to present that information in the memo. So the total demolition and abatement budget for the project is $565,000. That includes the demolition of the five structures. One actually was relocated. So the demolition of four structures and then the relocation of the Edward Jones Building. And then that also is going to include any additional abatement on the site that's required because of the. any additional abatement on the site that's required because of the dry cleaner being there.
So this will bring the project to a point which will be ready to roll for the construction contractor?
Yeah, the, so, right now, we're currently, the goal is to have a contractor demo Fire Station 11 ahead of the contract for the construction of Fire Station 11, and we also have a contract that's advertising right now to hire a contractor to do some remodel work at the Hill Street site, that that's going to be where a crew and apparatus will be located while Fire Station 11 is being constructed, and so that's happening, this demolition is going to happen, and then the goal is to have the Hill Street address ready for the crew to move in by, I think it was going to be the first week of June.
I guess, yeah, okay. And I know we've been in the process of RFP to look at general contractors.
Mm-hmm.
Where are we in that process?
We, I guess I can, I think I can share that, because I did send out letters and emails to all of the contractors that were selected, and we received four proposals in response to the RFQ, and all four were responsive and responsible, and so we selected all of them to move forward in the process, to submit bids on the, on the invitation to bid when it's, when it's ready.
So the next step is they will, they will all respond to a given consistent set of requirements?
Yes, project documents and construction drawings.
And when, when will that bid be received?
Right now, we're targeting the first week of May that the project documents would be ready to provide to the general contractors.
And then they have to be back to us by?
Let's see, I actually have these dates written down, so I'll get them right, so we're expecting to get bids back by June 21st, and then we're targeting July 13th for council award, and construction would start sometime the latter part of July.
Okay, thank you. On the Winning Bid Groot Brothers out of Woodland, any history from them?
No, no, they are, they are responsive, and they had had all the correct paperwork. I know Rob Goins is managing that project, and he's spoken with them.
Have they done this type of building before, so close to a major highway, or?
They, they, I mean, they do demo work, so, so that's what they're in the business for.
Yeah, it's just quite a bit less for their bid compared to the other two, and yet they're out of state.
Yeah, we saw that, and Rob spoke with them, and they had no concerns, so.
Yeah, mm-hmm, okay, wow, so, all right? What would you like to do with this item?
I would move that we authorize the requested award, that's on page 51. Second.
All right, any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, motion carried. All right, thank you, Stacy. Okay, business from the council, Dick, you're all by yourself down there on that side of the dyes.
Yeah, I was wondering if Commissioner Tucker was the one that fell down the stairs, I see he's got the cast off his foot.
No, this was dancing with the dogs at home, I, no good stories at all, so.
Oh, shoot, thanks.
Actually, I think we were at an event, I can't remember where it was, a few months ago, and then he came in with his scooter, he had his one leg on a scooter.
What kind of dog did that to you?
No blame the dog at all, it was actually a wet night, and late night, getting home, and the dogs out, and I stepped, twisted the ankle, fell about, and I took my hands, but the funny thing is, my wife, we came home together, she went to bed, one of my dogs' name is Finn, so I was on the, yeah, she laughed, my foot is broken, it is off to the side, my leg of it all, and so I have to get on my hands and knees to crawl to the house, and I am calling. She heard me calling the dog, she felt one of the dogs, we have four, so she felt one of it run off, and I called to the house, and Rain, she gets to the house, and she starts coming down her knife down, and wants to know what's wrong with the dog.
And then you showed her, huh?
Well, I have to say, I'm glad I asked, I swear.
Yeah.
Too much information.
Oh, that's funny. Okay, anything else, Dick?
No.
Okay, all right, Rich?
That's kind of like, never sing after the kids do at church, it's just, I sent everybody a, an email with some information I'd like you all to take a look at, we, at Kiwanis this morning, we got a.
Yesterday morning.
Yesterday morning, yes, we got a report from a guy who, who does HD videos, and it just occurred to me that we could make some use of it, so, I'll take a look at it. The other thing is, day after tomorrow will be my 32nd year in business, and.
Great.
It only seems like 200 or 300 years, so.
Some better than others.
Some better than others.
Yeah.
Has that been here in Albany?
Most of it has been, I was always working in Albany. The business itself didn't move here officially till 1993, but I was always working here, whether it was, whether it was out of a van, or pickup, or whatever.
Congratulations, that's great, so, yeah. Ray?
No, just a procedural comment on the consent calendar, one of the items I saw, I thought it was just a typo initially, and then said, "No, that can't be right," it was the Industry Request Council Subcommittee, it says Wednesday, September 24th, 2014, is the minutes we approved, I said, 19 months ago, we're getting, just getting the minutes now, is that, something fell through the cracks, or?
Who does the minutes for that? Who do the minutes for that?
It wouldn't surprise me, depending on the workload of the person who did the minutes. I don't know who that is, but it's not uncommon for our business to be months and months and months behind, depending on other workloads.
We're way past it, we're way past that in a real positive mode, so it was just.
Right, right, and I'm not making excuses, I'm just telling you what's, what's real in City Hall.
Thank you.
Thanks for asking, I'll try to get an answer for you.
Don't worry.
Okay, that's it, Ray? Okay, Floyd?
No, thank you.
All right, and I didn't have anything this evening, Wes?
No.
Nothing? Okay, staff? Do you have anything? Oh, boy, okay, so next, we have work session April 25th, and regular session April 27th, but we do have CARA next week on the 20th, so with that, we adjourn.